Good evening, I'd like to call the April 11th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. As you can see, we do not have microphones functioning here tonight, so we'll ask that you keep sidebar conversations to a minimum and I'll try to ask people to speak as loudly as they can up here, but could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Cange?
Here.
Ms. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Strike?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Uh, only that I should abstain from the resolution because I was not present for the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Walker will be abstaining from the resolution. Mr. Cange?
I'll be abstaining also, I wasn't present to hear case 2016-0011.
Okay. Andre?
Nothing.
Mitzi?
Yeah.
Brandon? Disclosures?
I'll be abstaining from abstaining and service as well. We've got two of our one.
Okay, and I would just like to mention a couple of disclosures. One is related to Spinard Road. I sit on the board of the Spinard Chamber of Commerce. Otherwise, my company does not have property in this particular vicinity. The other thing I wanted to mention is that as it relates to Muldoon Town Square Park, I did participate in some of the public outreach associated with that effort, and my company does have property under development and not developed in the vicinity across Muldoon Road. I'd be happy to take any, if there's any questions on that, but I just wanted to mention it for the record. Any questions on my role there? Hearing none. The consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Mitzi? Can I second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Strike. Anyone wishing to pull the resolution on the consent agenda? Any discussion? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our regular agenda, we have one item that is not a public hearing that we'll take up next, and then three items that are public hearings. The first item is case 2016-0027, context-sensitive solutions transportation project design study report for Spinard Road reconstruction phase two. Could we have staff or petitioner presentation?
There's no sound.
No. I don't know. Try it again.
I don't think it's on. It doesn't say when it's on. Oh, okay. It's just recording, I just. So I'll have to speak loud. This is a draft design study report for Spinard Road reconstruction phase two, which comes between Calhoun Drive and Davidson Boulevard. The initial concrete design 2020 identifies Spinard Road as a transit supportive development corridor. Spinard Road is in need of reconstruction to improve roadway elements that do not meet current MOA and NECA standards. Transit facilities along the corner are male and do not meet current standards. Public comments indicated a preference for enhanced pedestrian facilities. As a result of public preference, it has eight-foot concrete sidewalks will be constructed on both sides of the road. And attached weather, it all has your practice case that the width and length have been modified from 10 feet to 5 feet. Transit facilities are included in this project. Given the constraints, base focus, conditions of locating and building, specific focus, the focus on street state and street rather than landscape tenures along the elements in order to provide additional parking, the land swap is composed with promise bakery. MOA would swap the park they own on Southwest side of Spinard Road and 203rd Avenue for the parking lot owned by the bakery across the street. The department recommends approval of the draft design study report for the project with one condition, that's on page four of the staff table.
Okay. John, go ahead.
Question to staff, please. We received the information in the packet regarding a change in the draft design study report involving bicycle lanes and really substantial changes to the cross-section of it. And I'm wondering if we need to make an amendment to the condition of approval to specify that that is what we're approving, not just the draft study report dated January 2016? Because the changes occurred on March 25th, 2016. Do we need to add something to incorporate that?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Spring, yes, I think that would be, I think the commission did make that change.
I'll have to worry.
Yep.
Anything else, staff? Can we maybe ask for a presentation? Maybe, Jim, if we could get sort of a summary of what the changes are from what we're looking at to what, where you're headed with the road project, and then maybe a little bit of discussion on timeline and process.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Jim Sawhill, S-A-W-H-I-L. I'm with Lowndesbury and Associates and here to represent project management engineering. With me also tonight is members of the design team, we have representatives from project management engineering, Brooks and Associates that did our public involvement process, and Gudisworth North is here to answer any questions you might have on landscape either or amenities that are in the project. This project started actually back in 2001 as a DOT highway safety improvement project because there's a cluster of accidents up and down the corridor, so we're looking to correct some of those accidents if we could. The result of that original study was to recommend a three-lane section for Spinard Road to improve safety, and also to lighten sidewalks through the corridor and improve pedestrian safety. So once this project was picked up by the municipality of Anchorage in 2003, we took that basic recommendation forward from there. The project has been stalled several times during various reasons, funding controversy, and we're kind of back restarting the project and pushing it forward with the support of these new administration. The first phase of the project, which was from Hillcrest down to Chester Creek, was completed in 2010. The existing conditions along the roadway is it's currently a four-lane road with four looklight sidewalks. There's high pedestrian use along this corridor, and it also has high transit use. It's the second highest ridership in the city of transit route through there. We also have a lot of offset intersections along this segment of the road which causes houseless issues. One of the biggest accident clusters is 27th Avenue, which is an offset intersection. And with this project, we have purchased some land and we're going to be able to realign the eastern leg to fix that and the roadway intersection, so that will be approved. We have a lot of parking issues along corridor. There's a lot of businesses now that have head-in parking in front of their business, and then they're backing out into the street to exit, so that's one of the issues we're also trying to clean up. There will be some other parking issues as we improve. So the proposed improvements for this roadway is to construct a three-lane road, we're going to reconstruct the structural section, we're going to have an eight-foot sidewalk, concrete sidewalk on either side for enhanced pedestrian improvements, and one of our design changes is a five-foot bike lane for the entirety of the project. Previously in our design, we had a four-foot bike wave, which was allowed on the bike plan from 27th Avenue north to Hillcrest, and had no bike facilities from 27th down to 28th. One of the things we heard in our meeting with the public or the DSR was the need for widened bike facility, five lanes, and continuation of that bike lane through the length of the project. So that's one of the changes we're meeting. What we heard from the public as we've been going through this project is pedestrian facilities are an important component, and that was a priority for the public to improve those. We heard that the transit stops are a priority for the public, and we should be improving those, and those are included in the project. We also heard a lot of concerns about reducing the road from four lanes to three. There's a lot of concern among businesses, but I think we've kind of worked through that and have pretty substantial support right now. Just a few people aren't happy that we've come along, and we feel pretty good about where we are. The parking issues on the project, again, are a lot of head-in parking that we're going to have to eliminate and have to work with the businesses to deal with that. We also have a pretty tough issue to crack with the bakery. The bakery's an important business in town. It's the largest commercial bakery. They've been there since the 50s and had a lot of unique needs and had issues. One of them is dealing with all their small delivery trucks. Their small delivery trucks are kind of grandfathered for parking along the building. Typically, we don't have trucks in a food tree zone, but they do have grandfather rights for that. So designing our project to allow that to continue was important. They currently have a parking lot across the street where their employees park. The municipality has recently purchased a lot south of them, and we've worked out a land exchange to exchange that parking lot for their parking lot, which makes a better situation for their employees, and it also gives us the ability to take the parking on the old bakery parking and have its used for the businesses on that side, which will be losing some of their head-in parking. So it's a good solution, it's really working for everybody, and the businesses on that east side are pretty excited about the opportunities that we've provided. We're also going to be providing parking at 27th Avenue. We're realigning the road next to AMH, so there's going to be some extra parking, so they will provide some additional parking there. And we're also going to provide some parking on Photo Avenue, which will help Buckaroo and Deuxo Olympia with the parking area along there, they're going to use there. Those two businesses also have a parking in the back, which is their primary parking. One of the things we're also doing with this project that's unique is we're providing the opportunity to take the improvements to the front door if the businesses want to participate in that, so it's strictly optional if they want to work with us on that. So we're working to bring sidewalks up, to blend the improvements with their business, provide planters, whatever details they wish to have. One of the things we have heard in working with the businesses is there's a pretty significant homeless issue, transit issue in the area, so they want to make sure anything we provide doesn't provide an opportunity to sit or, and in most landscape areas, the owners really aren't interested in it. They don't want anywhere people to hide or convert it into unfortunately a residence. So, so far, the businesses that have committed to work with us and bring the improvements to their door include the Spinard Center, AMH, Cafe AK, and Plato's Plaza. And we think as the project gains momentum and we go through the process, we're going to get additional people on the road. That's pretty exciting, it's going to make for a great quarter. The changes to our design, since we've submitted our draft DSR, includes the addition of five-foot bike lanes for the project. We're also looking to add left turn pockets at 27th Avenue. 27th is a very busy road with Moose's Tooth right there or Bear's Tooth, so we have a lot of turning movements, so we need a mod fight to do that. We will be eliminating the on-street parking between 23rd and Hillcrest. There was some on-street parking on the east side that we had planned, but once the land swap became available and that parking could be used on the east side, the traffic engineer turned it into better way ahead of them. There was also a comment we got from the bike community, they were worried about parallel parking and simply bikes there getting dored off there, so that's been changed. And with that, I'd be happy to get three questions.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like the idea of eliminating the parking on the street, although generally I think it works pretty good, but I can see what it's wrong with, and I was going to ask about that. It makes sense. There was one comment from the trails coordinator regarding an activated pedestrian activated signal at 27th. 27th, as you know, is one of the bike head, what do you call it, corridors, boulevards. I expect that that is funded in the future, there'll be lots of traffic, pedestrian and bicycle traffic going through there. There's no light there now.
No, there's not.
What is the problem, what is the issue with the activated pedestrian light waves that are included, or is it, I think you guys saw some rationale for it?
You know, the bike boulevard is really not our project. We're coordinating with them, we want to match up with them, so the whole issue of why that wasn't supported has come up with the bike boulevard. I know in general, we try not to have mid-block crossing pedestrian signals. We did look, it was one of the things we looked at in the 26th intersections, to see if maybe activated pedestrian crossing would be appropriate there. Because of the offset intersections, we couldn't really accommodate it in the middle area.
But now it's not offset?
Like 27th isn't? No.
27th is going to correct that.
Yeah. You know, one of the things we could do, and I think it was mentioned, we could provide maybe some conduit crossings, so if we ever decide we have to bicycle boulevard to retrofit that with a flashing crossing, you know, it would be easier than it is currently.
So it could be done as part of the pedestrian development?
Yes. We'd like to do things that would not preclude it and make it easier, but we're not looking to install.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just for clarification. You said there were two eight-foot pedestrian sidewalks and two five-foot bicycle lanes?
Yes.
Have we seen eight-foot pedestrian walkways anywhere else?
Eight-foot pedestrian multi-use pathways are pretty common, and these eight-foot sidewalks actually qualify as a multi-use pathway because in the trails plan it does call a multi-use pathway on the side of the road.
But when we talk about multi-use pathways, adjacent to a five-foot bicycle one? So are we not, I mean, when we talk about multi-use pathways, we're accommodating bicycles, so are we thinking bicycles will have their choice?
Yes, they will. And what it comes down to is the casual rider or the family will be on the sidewalk. I will be on the sidewalk. Maybe you would be like.
And if you listen to our police chief, he says you better off in the street.
I guess maybe you're supposed to be in the street.
Somebody else? Yeah, go ahead, Brandon.
So in the case of the new bakery parking, that the ownership of that site will transfer to the bakery, the owner of the bakery building? What will happen with the ownership and the maintenance of the site next to AMH and the site, the former bakery parking or the, whatever is listed here as proposed business parking?
We're working on those issues right now. If it stays public parking in 27th, it will be responsibility of the municipality to file that. We're hoping we can work out an agreement with AMH to jointly handle that. The parking next, or across the street from the bakery, we're also working that. The businesses in that area are very excited about it, and they currently coordinate their snow plowing, have one in there, so we're going to have a meeting with them soon to lay out the options on how to do that, because some of those parking spaces will be essentially dedicated or tied to some of those businesses, so they will have, you know, permanent use of them. One of the ideas is to make a condo, make a parking lot condo.
And then you.
Spaces, and then that condo association would have dues and be responsible for operating it. And then, we met with Rob Ward over at Real Estate, and, you know, she had some ideas on how we might structure that. So our next step is to really meet with those owners and get area input on how they would like to see it structured. And again, the municipality doesn't want to be in the parking lot with us.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, and I'm glad you touched on the shared parking. I do hope that at some point in the future, we start to see a little more evolved thinking on how parking works in a district like this in order to encourage redevelopment, so I think this is a positive first step, but we're really constrained in how much we can grow.
Just overlay.
Yeah, I think it's necessary, and I'd like to see it more, go more towards a shared situation than individual, but I get that you've got individual negotiations. Two other comments, the lighting that you have right now, where Spinard Road was redone in the 80s, you have both the large lights as well as the pedestrian scale lights, you have a lot of, my mind, you have a lot of clutter going through that corridor. What's the plan? Is there going to be one set of new lighting, or will it be multiple sets, big and small? How will that work?
It's going to be one set of new lighting. We're going to use the same lighting we have going down the hill, where we have the curved green poles, all LED bike lane. There will be pedestrian scale lighting at the bus stops.
Okay.
So it'll be one, consistent by consistent, with the access.
Great. And the other comment I had just is, is snow and winter city design, you know, I'm used to in kind of business districts, either seeing that on-street parking that provides a buffer to the pedestrians, or, you know, some kind of place between the road, and I suppose now we have a sort of a five-foot bike lane, if you will, that provides a little buffering, but could you talk a little bit about where the snow goes, both from the road and the sidewalk?
Currently, the situation in that segment of the road is, it's, I got word it's a segment for street maintenance, and they actually plow it and haul it as they're flowing downtown. So as they're transitioning to downtown, first of all, on their route, they hit Spinard Road, and they're currently plowing and hauling and hauling.
And that's, I mean, there's no temporary storage designed into this project, so that really has to.
They're currently maintaining this segment of the road.
And that has to be maintained, or we deal with impassable sidewalks and.
And that's one of our big issues.
Yeah.
So we really got to start plowing our sidewalks earlier, so they can be used.
I've lived in plenty of places where businesses take on some of that responsibility as well. I know this has been a, I'm glad that we're having this conversation after we've voted on a bond, so, Jim, could you confirm that there is in fact funding for this road now?
There was 13.8 million from the legislature that was just passed, fully funded, currently scheduled to end the project in February of '17, and build it in the following construction season. One of the comments we've heard throughout the process is we don't want another Arctic Boulevard, and so we're going to work on defining segments of this road and requiring the contractor to pick those segments before it moves on. It'll be done in the following season.
As someone who has a vested interest on Spinard, south of this project site, it better not be another Arctic Boulevard, or we'll never see our section of road worked on, so I'm a big proponent of that. So with that, I would accept the motion to adopt, go ahead, John.
Yes, I'd move to recommend approval of the 2016, case 2016-0027, draft design study report for Spinard Road reconstruction phase two, Hillcrest Drive, Davidson Boulevard, with the condition as recommended by the department, with the following amendment at the end of the sentence. We accept that as modified by the post-Spinard Road cross-section dated March 25th, 2016, and memo from Lowndesbury and Associates regarding Spinard Road reconstruction phase two design study report. Additional information, design changes dated March 29th, 2016. Could you give that?
2016, yeah.
You're good?
It's basically paraphrased the memo.
Yep.
Head in, so.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cange. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I appreciate the effort that everybody involved has made in trying to get this project forward. It's been a long haul, and I think this public process is reflected in how well it's been done, and good input and good public meetings. I especially think from my technical point of view that the forecast of the traffic is very good, it's very well done. I think you look into account the fact that not only historically that it's not growing a lot, but that this redevelopment will probably spur new development, which we've seen a lot in this area, even with that project. So it probably will grow some in the future, but yet I think that even though it isn't growing, this three-lane facility is going to be very much adequate for the traffic load that it's going to incur in the future. And I think it's also going to spur some great things in this area. It's going to make Spinard Road, sorry, pretty exciting, but as far as destinations for people in Anchorage, but I think this is going to make it just a, just a fabulous place to go visit, for it's hanging and whatever.
Well said, Mr. Spring. Anybody else wishing to speak to the motion? Any discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Chair.
Yes?
Moving into that phase, we have some public process. I don't know if folks have any experience with the whole.
Okay, yeah. Do we actually have to withdraw it specifically?
You have to make, it's on the agenda, you have to make a motion.
Do I have to reorder the agenda to be able to deal with it, or can I?
You can just do it.
Could I get a motion to withdraw case 2016-0034, an ordinance amending Title 21, 2107-120A1 to clarify the applicability of large commercial establishments' development standards for vehicle sales and rental uses?
Seconded.
Thank you. That has been moved and seconded. Is that coming back to us at all, or that's just withdrawn?
It's dead.
Okay. Any opposition? Hearing none, that case is withdrawn. Thank you, Mr. Strike, for bringing that to my attention. So we're moving into the public hearing portion, there are three public hearings. Wait, read the procedure now or wait till? I'm going to read the procedure for public hearing. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, we'll ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all his or her representatives, get 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, get five minutes, and individuals three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at time of filing. Next up is case 2016-0019, municipality of Anchorage, Heritage Land Bank requests for rezone from PLI to B3, generally located south of Huffin Road, west of Brandon Street, and east of Old Seward Highway.
Tyler?
Yes?
Before we get the staff report, can I say something real quick?
You got a disclosure?
On this case?
Yeah.
So I actually forgot to disclose this earlier, but my, I definitely have a serious interest and ultimately may end up making a bid on the, I mean, the reason for 2016-0019 is to dispose of that fire station in a sale, a sealed bid auction. I believe that I would be interested in participating in that. I don't know if that's going to happen yet, but I just don't want to get another nasty letter from APAC if I decide to do that in the future, so I thought I should put that on the table before we jump into this.
I think you were right to do so. Any questions of Mr. Walker? Go through, could I?
Yeah, Brandon, I mean, you know, I don't.
Yeah, Brendan, I mean, you know, I know how real estate is, could be slim to none, it could happen. You know, just for the fact that you may know a little bit more about business parcel than the body or the group as a whole, it may pay you just to recuse. That way, if something came up later, it wouldn't come back to bite you. So instead of going through this whole list, I would probably just suggest that, or make a motion to, to direct you to participate in the case, however, I would support that motion.
Is that motion on the table? Can I take that? So Mr. Cange has a motion to direct Mr. Walker to participate. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spring. Any discussion?
As I mentioned before, based on Mr. Walker's interest in the case and potentially a financial interest in the matter before us, I am not going to support my motion.
Okay. Given that we don't have machines, we're going to go down the line. Mr. Spring?
No.
Mr. Strike?
No.
Andre? Yes, directs him to participate. No? That was a no? No?
No.
And no. So you are recused. If you could leave the chambers, I don't know where you go right now, but have fun out there. Don't go too far, we'll need you back at some point. So back to case two thousand sixteen zero zero one nine, can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This rezoning is pretty straightforward. The commission will be making a recommendation on whether or not the assembly should adopt this zoning from PLI to B three, general commercial establishment for the fire station I, which is being commissioned, a new fire station is being built in this location. So the fire department owns the property, and they're going to be, I'm thinking, to change the zoning to B three and then selling the property. It is basically a pause when PLI's own property is in private hands. And PLI, if you push, you have schools, fire stations, universities, government facilities zoning PLI, but, you know, it's going to be private-owned property. You should look at the appropriateness of, with the right zoning for this location. And on both sides of it, our B three across the street is the Huffman Business Park. Behind it is Wolfman County Residential, so it would be completely mapped. Fast food restaurants directly across from them, McDonald's on one side, strip mall on the other. Most appropriate zoning along is Minor material road, B three. The department's recommending a rezoning to B three without any special limitations. We believe that the zoning needs all standards of approval for, or the approval criteria for rezoning, that it's acceptable for zoning. I'm not aware of any objections to this. The petitioner offered a special limitation to, to demonstrate compliance with the management departments. I mean, upon redevelopment of the site, they'll be required to bring the site of the current code departments for zoning. I think it's premature to, we, what we're dealing with here is, what is the appropriate zoning? And site plan and development decisions should be based on code. And I think it's premature to put constraints on the property at this stage, we don't know what the use of the property will be. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, and the petitioner represented the fire department here as well.
You got a question? Go ahead, John.
I heard you said no comments. Was the community council in the area notified and responded to all this?
Yeah, so the petitioner had a walk-in community meeting where they sent mailer out to all the properties within five hundred feet. That is, five hundred foot radius of the petition site. So they mailed to the residents and the property owners, held a meeting. Their, a summary of that meeting is in the packet. One of the leaders in the community council also clouded on this application, as seen by the fire department. And the only comment that came back from the public was, public hearing noted the return of Page thirty-three of your packet, and it looks like it was a neighbor who owned one of the condos, the only family behind. He wanted, he's concerned about...
Would it address egress, off Silver Fox?
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be possible, just to address that comment maybe? Is there, could there be ingress, egress, off Silver Fox, or does it all have to come off of Huffman?
Um, I...
Is anything dedicated, says it, that it can?
So the issue here is that Huffman Road is owned by DOT, and they're saying that they, upon building permits for the property, they will require the driveway to be taken away, and that all access will be from one of the side streets to the alleyway.
Or...
So they stated that they won't allow the current driveway to exist. The municipal traffic engineer, I think, provided comments in agreement with that. So, you know, future owner will have to, you know, work with those issues through that process.
Sure. There's one more follow-up. Given that the Huffman exit will go away, what would be, maybe, what would be the largest sized facility that could go on B three, given the point eight three acreage? Do you know off the top of your head?
Well, I mean, it depends. I mean, they have to meet the, one of the biggest constraints would be, I mean, the requirement, and then they'll be required to install new landscaping for code. So it's hard to say. I mean, there's an existing building. What that building will become for, for, you know, I guess, removal or portion of that building, it's just hard to say.
Pretty hard to take that sort of swag. I was just looking at, you know, how much traffic would be going in and off of Silver Fox. It's hard to gauge how much traffic goes in and out of the fire department, but I think the business would be quite different.
And that's why I think that, you know, these decisions should be based on, you know, sort of the science of the traffic engineering, once they know the future use of the property. It can become a daycare, it could become a brewery, you know, who knows what it could be.
It can't become a brewery if we rezone to B three, Francis, so come on.
That's a good observation. That's correct.
Any other questions for staff? Greg?
I'd like to follow up on the same line of questioning here. This is part of the town center. We're looking to move this to B three. It will be the, one of the larger B three developer lots there. I guess I'm coming back and questioning the DOT's insistence that there be no access off of Huffman Road. Is that something that the city should push or counter? It doesn't seem quite logical, based on what information I currently have, that we would cut off all access on the Huffman Road at that point, on that particular piece of land. It's B three, town center, it will be the only lot in the town center that's identified here that has no access off of Huffman. I'm just concerned about the traffic coming into the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, so that's a good point, but, so there are other, there are other commercial properties that have access to the side streets and don't have access directly out onto Huffman, the Wells Caraway, for instance. There are others that use the side streets, that strip mall right next door has access to the side street and has access to the, to the...
I would count it that the Huffman though did have access onto, before the roundabout and the whole interchange for place, so that it used to have access directly on the Huffman.
So when there's, you know, you think of Tudor Road or Muldoon Road, these, these commercial corridors where every single lot has a driveway from that, you know, commercial use onto, you know, an arterial road, and it creates, it creates a dangerous situation with too many driveways. This is a minor arterial road, and DOT owns that property, and they alone decide who they grant access to their property. And so, you know, this issue will be fought or discussed later. I, you know, I don't, I guess if the future redevelopment of the property required that review by, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, then you can do that way in on it, but, you know, DOT has already made up their mind about this, but, you know, I don't know really what the future holds.
I'm just trying to keep the continuity of the town center. I understand that you use the word corridor, but trying to keep the continuity of that this is the Huffman Town Center, Mr. Cange.
Well, yes, is this, is this within the Huffman Town Center as identified on the initial map?
So, I'm going to move this along.
Let me just say that there's no town center plan. The idea was there would be a town center plan for each one of these town centers. To date, there isn't one that's, that's been drafted, and there's no plans to do one, so I, I don't think we can really say what the objectives of the town center were or are for that without a plan to...
Thank you. Good, Mr. Strike? Anybody else have questions for staff? Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come testify, please state your name and spell it for the record. You speaking as petitioner, Robin?
I am.
Okay.
Can I have a glass? I'm not sure I really need this, but...
It's just, it's a fake microphone, anyway. It is.
Chair Robinson, may I just mention, my name is Robin Ward. I am with the Municipal Real Estate Department, and I am the agent for the fire department for the two properties that they manage that have been deemed to be surplus to municipal needs. As soon as the crew and the equipment have been moved to the new fire station, we anticipate that we will have a sealed competitive open opening for the sale of this, this disposal of this property. In anticipation of that, we really don't like to sell PLI property to private owners, and we also want to gain the highest sales price for the municipality, allowing for the most flexible redevelopment zoning for the new use. So that's the reason that the application is in front of you today. We anticipate that we will be selling property late summer or early fall. And so I'm available for questions. We agree with the staff planning, and we agree with the staff report, so we have a good question.
Just a clarification. You said that you have, you're representing the fire department on two properties.
Yes.
There's only one property that's in there.
We have two fire stations this year that have been sold. This one is here, and this one is on eight fourth, and July, and this one on...
John?
So, Robin, wouldn't you think there would be the advantages of selling the property and not having access on Huffman?
It will create a little bit of a problem. You are familiar with the property, there is a great difference between the side of the property and silver fox. So there is going to be some issues, and it probably will take a little bit of parking away, because you have to create a better grade to be able to access on that side. I am a little disappointed, frankly, that DOT has been selling system to take away. I mean, I admit, the whole front of the property is driveway, because it's a fire station. However, you know, it would seem that it would be reasonable to make a smaller access, but still allow it to offer.
And it also seems to me that the neighbors would be upset, a little bit upset that we live off of Silver Fox Lane, to have to compete with the traffic coming in and out of the new retail, the access Huffman, because there's no light there. And I don't know what your experience is in this particular section of the road, but when you have roundabouts, it creates somewhat of a problem in that there's no gap in the traffic. There's continuous two-way roundabouts, and as a little traffic light would create a gap so they can actually get out. So I think there's sort of been some frustration from Silver Fox Lane people about, how the heck are we supposed to get out of this place now? They don't have to go down to Brandon, is it, I don't know, maybe around about and hit the other roundabout and get out that way. But I think that'd be a little upset. I'd also be upset, I think, with the suggestion by the traffic engineer to have access off the alley.
I don't think that it's going to be an issue with the new owner and the neighbors. And so I anticipate that whoever possesses that property will probably start a conversation with DOT if they are participating.
Any other questions? Hearing none, you have eight minutes and forty-six seconds for rebuttal, so.
I doubt it all.
All right. Anyone wishing to testify on case two thousand sixteen zero zero one nine? Anyone at all? Last chance. Hearing none. Robin, any, any final words? No? Okay, at this point, the public hearing is closed. What's the wish of the body?
In case two thousand sixteen zero zero one nine, request to rezon approximately point three acres to PLI to B three. I move to approve rezoning.
Okay.
One second.
Seconded by Mr. Sporhase. Discussion.
I'll just have some findings to be related to staff.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak? Okay.
It appears that this rezon is in the best interest of the public, as the municipality is disposing, or attempting to dispose of the property. It appears that the conditions have been met, and it is supported by the purpose recommendation outlined on page eight of our packet. I tend to, or I intend to support my motion.
Any additional comments? Any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, that motion is approved. Thank you. Next up is a little park master plan. Case two thousand sixteen zero zero twenty-five, Municipality of Anchorage, Parks and Rec, Muldoon Town Square Park, generally located east of Muldoon, south of Debar Road, and north of East Fourteenth Avenue. Get a staff or petitioner report, and I just remind folks, I don't know how well you guys can hear, especially people commenting, but feel free to come on down closer if you can't hear that well.
Can you, Mr. Chair? This engine said with a request approval of Muldoon Town Square Park master plan, and also the local grandparents don't care. I'm just saying, all through the road, because the bar street and our road and the city have it. The park's case number twenty-seven of April, extending to Muldoon Road, providing a direct base on the approach to, consists of five tracks, and the property is on Art Program as well as B three, that's now the special renovation, which are in the twenty seventy four. The initial access are being promoted below, the full access will be in Debar Road, and so the city will be, and, 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 and access to Wimper's on the current to the south. The two gaps area is redeveloped for open recreation areas in part of the city of Muldoon. Which and boardwalk connections over to create a plant with access to the base community and other to the town. Second, open recreation stage is planned as well. The department recommends approval of the master plan subject to the four conditions on page one of the pack. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome back, Mr. Walker. Any questions for Margaret? John? And there's gonna be a, is there a presentation from the park planners as well? Yeah?
Can you begin, Chair? I present this to the Department of Parks and Recreation Department here.
You guys have got a, you got a presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know if you want, feel free to go now, but just know that's coming.
I will say something mine for the, just one question then for staff. Condition number three on page nine says resolve the following access issues to Muldoon Road with the last attorney's case in public service. He doesn't say which issues. I wonder if we need to amend that or?
Chair, Mr. Strick, that's the title. I amended that condition and I'd say it's resolved probably.
Resolve access issues?
Yeah, resolve access issues to Muldoon Road. Staff of Parks and Recreation Department have been working quite a while with the last Department of Transportation regarding access to the Muldoon, Muldoon Town Square Park. So that's the title. I agree with that one, getting that out.
The whole condition or the word following?
The following.
So is there, is there access issues on Muldoon?
Um, Chair, the last Department of Transportation did provide concerns in their comments, and their comments of six seventeen.
There's a
Yeah.
I think that this is a, is actually a very critical issue.
Yeah.
Not only is it this critical for the access from, for the public, but it hinges on the design itself. If we can't get access the way the plan suggests, which is between Fourteenth Avenue and Debar, new access, then you can't access the market, the side of the market. We can't access the event that's going on there. It's really critical.
Okay, well, we'll see if we can get other perspective on it. Any other questions for? Yeah?
There is by the way dedicated along Fourteenth. It's dedicated, there's at least a half, half a driveway dedicated along that, along Fourteenth, so.
But through the chair, I'm gonna jump on some, but there's a creek between Fourteenth Avenue and the market, so you can't really haul your stuff to the market because there's a creek there in the way. You could park there and somehow get over the creek, but you can't bring your, your material or your market goods to the new site. So that's a real, real problem.
Very good. I'm sure we'll hear more about it. Anything else? Okay, who's coming on up? All right.
So my name is Steve Ray, please. I'm a park planner in the municipality of Anchorage, Parks and Recreation Department, my last name is R A F, U S D. First, I just wanted to thank the planning department commission for hearing this case. Now, I'll go with the top part of the year, Mr. President. But in two thousand and six, we were complex, in two thousand and six, we used to call it Anchorage to purchase former last green house property. And since that time, residents of East Anchorage have advocated for the creation of a park and a public gathering space, reminiscent of the character and conditions of the former Green House property. In two thousand and nine, the Northeast Community Council passed a resolution to support the park, and in two thousand and twelve, the City of Cleveland Council passed a resolution to support the park. From two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fourteen, the East Anchorage District Plan is being created, and that was eventually adopted by the Assembly in two thousand and fourteen. Some of the key themes as they relate to the park and the district plan were a desire to focus on Town Center development within the bar, the interest in retaining open space east of Muldoon and Debar, and then also a need for year-round recreation opportunities in and around the district. Also, priority action number two of the East Anchorage District Plan identified that developing a small area plan for the parks up front of Muldoon. And so part of developing this master plan was the implementation of that. So in two thousand and fifteen, the Anchorage Assembly formally dedicated the entire property as parkland, and shortly after, we opened our P L to begin the master planning process. So we're hearing some approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The plan itself is a twenty-year vision. It identifies needs, provides framework for development, management, and maintenance of the park. And as a vision, it provides a park and community destination for family, families, people, all ages, abilities, enjoy, year-round recreation, and community safety, helping the community. So who are we serving in East Anchorage is the development of a park. So East Anchorage is the largest, most diverse area of Anchorage. You've got about fifty-six thousand people living there. It's about twenty percent of the population. It's also the most diverse area of the town. So if you look at enrollment at the Vegas Middle School and a Muldoon Elementary, you've got about between fifteen and twenty-five percent Caucasian students. That gives you an idea of just how diverse these schools are. And something that we heard go over and over through the master planning process was that this diversity makes for vibrant community and is something that we should be celebrating with this park. Also, efficiencies in parks in East Anchorage, the two thousand and six park plan identifies an efficiency of about fifty-seven anchor of community use parks in this area. Recommends that one or two new community use parks get developed, specifically identifying those locations. This sort of brings us the context to why we're here today. So I'd also like to talk about some of the public involvement and how we made the decisions that we made, identified access and the parkers market, these types of things, all in Muldoon. From the get-go, when we first engaged the public, they didn't want any parking whatsoever. They just wanted the entire park to be green space. But if you build it, it'll come, so you have to accommodate these types of facilities. So we've kind of done this give and take, but we have worked with DOT and MOA Traffic throughout the process. In terms of public involvement, we started with outreach, we went to the Spirit of Muldoon picnic, we did presentations at community councils, and then folks from the Park Advisory Committee, actually went door to door, manned up five hundred flyers in that neighborhood to get folks to come out to the public meetings. So we had monthly meetings with the Park Advisory Committee, which consists of folks from both Northeast and Senior Quilos Community Council, two public workshops, which we had about a hundred folks attend, and then we did an online survey and had about two hundred and twenty responses. We also worked with students at the Vegas Middle School and Harvard High School. We got input from a hundred plus students to identify what type of improvements we want to see of the park. Again, these are the future stewards, the people, these kids are gonna be coming up, growing up in this area, so the park's gonna be for them and their children. And then once we had an idea of what type of developments going in the park, we had an agents' formation meeting. So this is when we brought in DOT, MOA Traffic, Watership Management, Current Planning, Long Range Planning, Public Works. And we basically identified the types of improvements that folks would like to see, and we talked about how we can make that compatible, because as you know, there's a lot of development happening in the area right around Muldoon and Debar. And access and connections are definitely two big issues. We'll get to that in a second. So when we have a preferred alternative, we brought it to the Northeast Community Council, Senior Quilos Community Council, Parks and Recreation, and received unanimous resolutions of support from all three entities. So some other issues that were identified through the process, general themes and issues, folks want to see a clean and safe park. It's developing, provides year-round recreation, a place of folks' community events. So the Molding Farmers Market just started this last year and that is extremely popular. But also the Spirit of Molding Picnic, a place that we can celebrate local cultures, and definitely a balance of new development studies, but also preserving the existing natural areas of the park. So I mentioned, and it's already been brought up here, it's something we could wait at least a little longer to get to parking and access and all that. But we realized that that was gonna be the main issue going into this process. How do we get folks into the park? How do we provide enough parking without paying for the whole park? Based on all of the feedback that's getting from the public. So even before we began public involvement, we reached out to DOT, and we asked them to help us identify the opportunities and strengths of the site. When we determined the safest and best access into the park, and then we continued work with DOT and then MOA Traffic through the whole process. So DOT had submitted comments, they had gone into the report. Since then, we've met with them to resolve the issues of access from the, from Muldoon Road, excuse me. So one other point of interest is, with the two hundred and twenty-three people that responded to the survey, fifty percent of those folks indicated that they've traveled by way other than personal vehicles. Whether that's public transit or all things for bike lanes. And that's really encouraging, and I hope that we see that as we continue to do park projects and other types of development throughout the city. So what's in the master plan? So the master plan helps fulfill the Town Center concept identified in East Anchorage District Plan in Anchorage twenty twenty. With the park, the city is making a public investment that we hope will help catalyze community and economic development in East Anchorage. Going from east to west, we have three areas of the park. Got Muldoon area, which is the area of Long Muldoon Frontage. Speaking here. Muldoon area.
Small area.
Hey, Steve, we need you to record, so, yeah.
For the record, I just pointed out the three areas. Muldoon is a welcoming year-round destination highly visible from Muldoon Road. It's supposed to be the most active space, and we want to invite people into Muldoon Road and then have them use the new explore the park further. It's got things such as inclusive playground, pavilion, bench space, parking lot, gridiron, you can use the ground. So something similar to the Cuddy Oval, where we'll maintain it, ice in the wintertime, but in the summer, you can have a food truck area, you can have a fence space with the farmers market, or you can have a safety place where you're teaching the kid how to ride a bike. They don't have to ride in the street, they can ride on the gridiron. We're also gonna provide open space, restaurants, and lighting for safety. In the core area, which is the heart of the park, we've got a bike park identified, a pump track, a board climbing play area, a community garden, a orchard, or some sort of metal forest, a fenced dog park, recreation, a parking lot, park coast, to keep eyes on the park, as well as developing amusement trails and viewpoints. And then as you go to the far east part of the park, this is the least developed area. This is the area that has primarily, focused primarily on basic abuse and passive recreation. We want to accentuate the use of that area and have trails and just essentially get some recreation. The goal of this is not to bring all of Anchorage into, through the neighborhood. We want to have most of the traffic focusing either right at Boston and East Bar or off of Muldoon. And we've also been working on a shared use parking agreement with the owner of the Muldoon Mall. We've been making the traction of that, and they've sent in a letter that they would like to Another way that we're handling some of the parking plans. So the master plan realizes a community vision for a clean and safe park, place where community can gather, a place where people can recreate and review the natural environment, and I hope that the public understands this.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? John?
Uh, yes. First of all, I'd really like the design that you've left, and very innovative and a lot of real exciting things upon things. Have you got, so you mentioned that DOT is now, there is this resolved with access off of Muldoon?
Um, I don't know if that's resolved or no. Ninety percent resolved, we're working on it. If they would like to see, if they would like for a driving permit, which there's nothing in two thousand and four in the flat that restricts us from having driving access, but would they like to be able to see an extension from the median to give it to that?
That would be.
And that would be, that would, that would involve extending the median to the south from the turn lane, the left turn lane to the bar, extending it about a
And that would be a city responsibility then for Muldoon to implement the law? One other issue that I'd like to bring up, which wasn't really mentioned on the board. Sometime, I think, in the future, in my opinion, the Jay Bear property to the east, you know, may not no longer be needed for military use. I mean, it's hard to imagine a time where there's no war or whatever, but it's a, it's a possibility, and there's, the planning departments looked at that in the past. Quite a while ago. What would be the access to that area if it was developed or if it was handed over to the municipality? I don't know who has first dibs on it, if it's a native claim or is it a agreement?
Yeah.
Nevertheless, a agreement could choose to develop it if they, if they got hold of the property. There's not a lot of access to that area that you can get to from the east side along Muldoon. The bar may be the really, that most viable route to that area. I hate to think that that would be the entire traffic access, but it's gonna have to play a role, I think, in the future. I wouldn't want to exclude that access by making decisions today about the park. Perhaps it's not absolutely necessary to put in the connection now, the bar, the bar extension. Personally, I'd like to see that, but I think it would be fair, it would help the overall circulation of the area. Nevertheless, I don't agree with the statement in the plan that calls for, and recommends that the bar right-of-way vacation get placed in the future, not right before. I think that would be a feature. And also, I don't particularly like the idea of the parking and the right-of-way on the east side towards the Jay Bear property. There's so many parking spaces there in the right-of-way. That would obviously conflict with future access. I don't know if that was discussed during the process. It's not a very salient issue to most people, maybe it didn't come up, but I think it's something that was taken into consideration in the planning of this adoption. Because that was a statement, but if you want to comment on it, that's fine.
I think, you know, in at least in speaking to the parking lot that we identified closest to the Jay Bear boundary. That primarily, the idea behind that was to develop in case there was a Jay Bear boundary trail that was developed and identified in East Anchorage District Plan from Centennial Park to farm by Centennial Park. So we want to be able to put it in the plan. There's not really much of a need or priority at this time. But if that trail ever was available, we want to be able to at least identify an area where there could be parking. So that was at least with that, and I have your, your comments about vacating the right-of-way, if you would want to tend to agree, I think we're accessing that maybe shooter or their lights and like highway and the bar, which would be your main, easy way to go there.
Yeah, Tony and then Greg.
Greg, I think you guys have done a good job, and I think with the outreach, it looks like a really good product. My question is in regard to some of the financials that you have, and maybe I'll just direct everybody to page eighty-two of the MOA packet or page one sixty, one fifty-nine, one sixty in our, in our packet. I saw something referencing to acquiring, whether it's some properties, which was a resolution to do that. So some funds were appropriated, or at least earmarked, I don't say earmarked, but some funds were looked at for the acquisition of some of the parcels, right? Or right-of-ways, to turn of like one point three million or something?
Um, which page is that?
Well, that's what I was, so that is on the
Four oh plan, plan.
I'll find that, come back. My question goes to your timeframe here. We're looking at, you know, this kind of is a long-range plan. Where do you think, at what point do you come into a position where you're looking in two to five years at, you know, another two, basically a big chunk I'm looking at is two million for the actual site development?
So we actually do have funds in hand right now.
Okay.
We got two six legislative grants, one four million dollars, one four and a half million.
Okay.
So that was the initial funding for the master plan. A million dollars expires in about a month and a half. And so we kind of, kind of fell off timing here. So we've done design engineering, so we can cover the funds, and it's getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. But we wanted to make sure, rather than all sort of the traditional MOA pack, planning, zoning, and then start design engineering, it's not the way I would prefer it. But we didn't want to lose the funds, and so we kind of moved forward with that. So with the one point two million dollars that was available for actually in the ground development, that would focus primarily on that front parcel, which we were on the Muldoon area. And for the most part, it could cover just about everything.
Really?
And it doesn't hurt to have a
And I'll, I'll find, I'll just reference here again, it's just putting through, I noticed some dollar amount that was.
I'll go to Greg. Greg?
Yes, through the chair. What is the status on the parcel on the Northwest Coast?
So that's a hundred by hundred, consistently pizza, one of that. We reached out to them at four different times in the process and had much love, get it respect. I think once they see groundbreaking, we'll be quite responsible. But we've reached out to them, and currently, we don't have funds to do the sort of acquisitions, I think. I think it would make the park much more clean in terms of how much of our access and connections, just moving the park a little. Right now it finds out in the ground construction, but we're going to continue to have conversations around the park.
Thank you. Mitzi?
Um, so about, I'm echoing now, if this is a little, if you've done a fire job of coming up with a new multi-user, multi-user park, um, I'm looking to comment on connectivity for bicycles and pedestrians. Um, this is an area that has a lot of children, they stand as a model, we come to you and make that really loud on all the road transit. Can you just comment on kind of bike head coordination and direction and send them to get to the car if that I can?
So in terms of what we can cover in our jurisdiction, we're focusing on what's happening in the park. But throughout, throughout the whole process, we've talked to Laurie's thinking about non-motorized transportation, about how folks will be accessing it. And we wanted to make sure that we provide connections at the logical points. So where cross street comes in, we want to make sure that we can provide a connection there and have an internal trail system, which will have a mix of trails. So we have ideally, when it's fully built out, divided trails that would be similar to the Chester Creek or whatever this is, our name is not lit. But, and also a mix of soft surface trails, we're going to have the creek in the right area to provide a natural experience. But a big thing is providing connections to the south. We've had class A wet weekends and we kept them in some park and then a couple of short street crossings. So in terms of providing connectivity, we've identified locations to connect the neighborhood and we've just been working with other planning departments and motorized transportation for our people.
You? Still looking?
No, I mean, it was related to the, the acquisition of the original parcels at five point three million. It was just, I, I was reading. Yeah, sorry if I can give you a question for her. You know, and I guess, maybe you guys look at this, but, you know, I hate to be the naysayer, but, you know, you've got your costs in here for doing a project and maybe it's something else that, that we can look at later. But, you know, this means we have ongoing maintenance costs and obviously where it sits now doesn't cost as much as it would if you actually have to mow the grass and paint the buildings and things like that. So maybe this is, I like the plan, I think it's detailed, but I think going forward too, I would like to see some little bit more detail with regard to what's this going to cost versus what, what's costing us now kind of thing. But I, I don't know if it doesn't relate to the plan, because it is, I'm good with that.
Okay, anybody else? Everybody good going straight into public hearing or anybody need a break? Good? Good? Okay, Steve, thanks. Stand by. At this point, we'd like to open up the public hearing. I'll remind people that if you're with a group or an organization, you have five minutes. An individual has three minutes. This, this light is working, right, Lori? There are little gizmo, that's one of the few things that is working. It'll turn from green to like yellow and then you have a minute left and it comes, goes by really quickly. So Christie, first up, come on up.
My name is Christy Wood, K R I S T I, G O L O D, and I am the Chair of the Northeast Community Council Park Committee. We fully support this plan and we urge your support as well. We believe this plan actively reflects the long-term vision our community has for this park. We have resolutions of support from both the Northeast County and Fort Hills Community Councils for this plan. During the past five years, our committee has formally gathered input from the community regarding how they'd like to see the park developed. I've compared those results to the results of Parks and Rec got after they made their more formal process of gathering input from the community, and those top priorities match. That does mean that really good communication between what the community wants to see and what Parks and Rec gathered during their process as well. This park will bring much needed beautification and uplifting to our area to balance out the rapid development in East Anchorage. Our area is booming with development and construction, as new multi- dwelling, multi housing complexes are being added and the plan that we updated. It's so important for our long-term development that we take opportunities among this rapid growth to set aside new space and outdoor recreational space, especially since so much of new housing has high returns and those residents won't have access to lawns or private outdoor space. It's important we acknowledge the tiny sense of nature for where we are in this process. We've been warned by the last state legislature for funding for this park is at risk. Funds that are not fully encumbered by the end of this legislative session are at risk of being thawed back. Even our funding that has not exceeded its current grant size of this risk is therefore imperative to support this plan and allow the process to move forward. It would not be acceptable to lose this funding. As you can see from reading the first chapter of this plan, Northeast Anchorage artists endorse twenty percent of Anchorage's population, and we are expected to absorb thousands more via the Anchorage community plan. Anchorage cannot expect us to bear this burden of population density without providing us with adequate resources to ensure the livability standards we love ourselves and our thousands of neighbors. This park is a critical component in ensuring we can maintain those livability standards as almost half the population of Northeast Anchorage lives within the immediate areas surrounding the park. In short, I urge your swift support of this plan, allowing us to move forward with the much needed beautification and uplifting this park will bring, in helping to support the demands for growing population.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
My name is Selena McQuire, S E L I N A M E T O Y E R. I'm the President of the Northeast Community Council. Uh, we have worked really hard in many, many, many years to get that property as a park. And even though it says, we're, at this point, we're calling it Muldoon Council Park, we hope that it'll be a destination for all of Anglers to come and enjoy, not just for our neighborhood. As Christie said, we have a very large population, very diverse population, and we have at every point in working towards getting this as a park for our neighborhood, we have worked with our neighbors and our community. We've taken input, we've talked to people at our pinnies that we started several years ago to highlight that piece of property as a feature park for us. And this is what our neighborhood wants, and we really need to preserve green space. We don't want every piece of property to be, have a building or business on it. So we urge you to support this so that we can encumber our time to get started on making this a safe environment for our neighbors to enjoy and all of Anglers. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Lord Green, S T U A R T, G R E E N, I U F, Mr. Chairman, Dr. McQuire. We know that, whatever you said earlier, the town center is not really getting off the ground, but that was a decision not made right, not made through the cap seven, that's why they have the cap script, wanting to script, but we haven't done anything. And this park, there's been a lot of work and a lot of people really hope to see something like this happen. We need it to make it happen. Up I travel on those sorts of land boundary, really want this park into the east side. And I just hope that you guys support it and just remember, decisions made at the top do not really reflect what's happening in our neighborhood. And I think Anglers should have many towns that have, with many people taking part in their community.
Anyone else wishing to testify?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I am Michelle Payer, M I C H E L D, P A M E R, from the Chubach, Washington City Foot Hills Community Council. And I am not on the board, but I am a voting member of that council and have been there for almost every meeting. We've seen this through over and over again. Chubach Foot Hills Park at the south end of Muldoon has just been overrun. It is the only park that truly has some picnic area in it, and we really need your help to get the park open on the other end of Muldoon. We cannot ask you enough. I know that if my council members and my board were here, which part of them are here, they would be going, yes, yes. So please help to support this. I cannot tell you the number of hours and people, I guess, just heart about things that have got in here that I've seen over and over from the entire community of Muldoon, of those who've come. And it's been hundreds. And if you really want to add it over the years, it's been thousands. So thank you for listening to us. The bugs will be worked out, I can guarantee you. We've got smart people in there. And the other part of Muldoon that goes towards the north, our wonderful legislators have already put in sidewalks that are larger up there to be walked on, all kinds of things. And we have people working on trails on the backside that are extending all the way up and around. So, you know, anything that opens up on Jay Bear will get opened to that side, because we have bikers that are trying to get all access all around the whole city. Thank you so much for your time and your efforts, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
So, yes. Yes, we do, my name is Bob Ruckey, U P K E, and I'm a member of the Northeast Community Council, Federation of Community Councils. I'm also Chair of the Northeast Community Center, which we opened up in nineteen ninety-six. This is located, I think, in the north, on the north end. We, we opened this, like I said, in nineteen ninety-six, and we have John Bond Boys and Girls Club. And I'm sure that these kids would just love to go out into that park. And it's satisfying their video games, that they could go out there and they could look at the fish and just read and walk around and really enjoy the parks. We really appreciate your support and research. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else wishing to testify? Last shot. Oh, here we go.
My name is Jimmy Holley, G E B I B E, H O L E D I K. The question is asked about funding and future funding. Fifty years of people, the city corporals and the Northeast Community Council, that have worked for years on this park, have come together, have Muldoon picnic, raised experiences, community, they've come together to work on this park, they've come together, pulled together the normal farmer's market, and they've come together to start fundraising areas and aspects of the park. I don't think there's going to be a problem in keeping this building in our neighborhood. I think the problem we need, if we don't get this approved, then we lose the funding and we'll have to start our own building. But we will start our own building. So I ask you...
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Supposed to be fun, guys. This is like Spinard Road and Muldoon Park and they're, they're both just flying through like times have changed suddenly. So anybody else wishing to testify here tonight? Anyone at all? Hearing none? The public hearing is closed. Unless Steve wants to have a minute thirty-three for rebuttal.
Do you guys have any questions other than...
Any questions? You got a question? Okay, no questions. I think Mr. Strike has a motion to make.
I will make that motion in the matter of case two zero one six zero zero two five for the approval of the Muldoon Park master plan. I move for approval as the plan as submitted. I believe we have one caveat, and that is to the staff's recommendation on number three, and that was to remove the wording, the following, from that piece.
Yep, and that's it. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cange. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I, I would. This has been a process. This has taken more time than I care to even address. It's been on the agenda here since I've been on the commission, and it's time to bring it across the finish. And for that, I applaud the folks that have put this together, that have stuck with it. It has gone through a number of iterations and everyone in the city has basically had a chance to comment on this plan. But it's, it's time. And notwithstanding the potential loss of funding, that's not why I'm supporting it, it's time to bring this to fruition. And that's why I'm supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. John?
I'd like to offer a remembrance.
You can try it.
Okay. I'm adding a recommendation, um, of a condition of approval on the five.
Okay.
To delete the recommendation to vacate the east Debar right-of-way and add parking during the ball.
You want to do those together?
It's the same issue, yeah, I think, you know.
Well, it's not. One's long-term, one's short-term. It's up to you, but, but...
Well, they felt, well, the parking in the right-of-way would prevent use of the bar as an access to Jay Bear, because the parking shouldn't be...
Well, you can always change the parking. That's my point. But go ahead. If that's your motion, we'll see if we got a second. So can you state it again?
Delete recommendation to vacate the east Debar right-of-way and add parking, as well as add parking in the Debar right-of-way.
Okay. Is there a second?
I expect, I hear, but there's no...
So John, John has a, he's proposing an amendment to the main motion to basically remove the deletion of the Debar right-of-way and the idea of parking within that right-of-way. You get that right?
So is the right off the doorknob since it's broad, you have to be parking?
Well, I, there's, there's, where in the, in the plan somewhere it recommends, you can see on the plan, you can see the right-of-way, even though it's not built through, right? And, and somewhere in the plan, it indicates that through the plating process, there would be the request to delete the right-of-way, correct?
Page forty in particular states that.
So Mr. Spring needs a second to be able to speak to, to the motion. Seconded by Mr. Walker. So go ahead, if you want to speak to it, John.
Okay, I think I already have mentioned that some of the problems with that. The main issue is future of Jay Bear property, whether that continues as a military base and whether it's ever surplus or used by the next in line, according to the agreements that have been made regarding the property. If that happens and that portion of Jay Bear is eventually developed, there will be a need for connections between Jay Bear and, and the rest of Anglers. You can't have all the, all the traffic going towards the Glen Highway. You need to have connections to the rest of the east of Anglers. And this is probably one of maybe two or three possible access points that would be useful for that. And I, I hate to see it removed, although I think it may be needed in the future. And I don't think that the vacation's going to really do much for the park. I mean, it doesn't, I see from the plan that it's basically open space and vegetation currently. I don't think it's going to harm or...
So can I, can I ask a question to clarify your motion? Your second part of your motion talks about parking within the right-of-way. So if your motion were to pass, would you be basically saying you do not want to see the parking that's shown at the east end along the bar, within the Debar right-of-way?
Within the right-of-way.
And where would you, how would you accommodate that parking then?
Well, there's lots of room in the, in next to the right-of-way for the parking. And as far, as far as, I agree, I'm interested to hear the purpose to that parking. And I agree, if there is a, a trail that, a boundary trail that is essentially built on Jay Bear, then it would be nice to have trailhead parking. So I see the need for that. How much parking is needed for that? I don't know. Probably, I think it can be accommodated on the parkland itself and, and without having to use a lot of that right-of-way for it.
Any other discussion? Hunter?
I support the part about the, the not vacating the right-of-way, but I think that temporary parking in the right-of-way would be appropriate, so I'm not in support.
And I would concur with that as well. That would be my thought. So anybody else?
I have a question.
Greg?
Is it, is it appropriate to ask the applicant their opinion of that second motion? Can I ask the applicant their opinion on that motion?
On the portion of, specific to the parking within the right-of-way? Well, you'd have, you can, they're going to be changing the plan. Is that what you want to ask them?
change it to split the amendments or the, between the vacation and the parking, if the parking is considered to be temporary.
Okay, so we've got it. So John's willing to divide the motion. Could you state the first, the first portion of the motion?
Delete recommendation to vacate the east DeBar right-of-way.
Okay. And we had a second on the overall, so we don't...
I'll, I'll second the new motion.
Okay. Is there any opposition to this motion? No opposition? That, that, right? Okay, okay. Then that ammend, that, the main motion is amended with a condition to not vacate the right-of-way on East Spinard Road. That goes back to our main motion. Now, the second portion of the divided motion, you good, you good?
You're just on the First Amendment. That's what you just approved. So the main motion hasn't been approved.
Right. So we're on the First Amendment, A.
Right.
Now we're on the one B, the divided motion. I know you got, I can barely follow. So John, you want to restate the second portion of the motion?
Second portion of the motion, I'd be to amend the portion of the plan that calls for parking in the, the bar right-of-way to allow it as a temporary use until such time as in the future that the bar road may be needed for access to Jay Bear. Is that too complicated? I mean, I like the idea of the temporary, I don't have any problem with temporary use, as long as recognizing the plan that the right-of-way may be used in the future for access, and then we might have to remove the park.
Okay, so this, this, is there a second, Mr. Walker, to this? Okay, so rather than saying, get the parking out of the right-of-way, your motion is to clarify that temporary parking, I mean, I mean, temporary could be long-time temporary, right? Long time. That, but that if, in fact, at some point, the right-of-way is needed to access further to the east, that it would be presumed that that temporary parking would be relocated.
Is that...
That's the motion on the table. Any discussion? Do we need to vote? Is there, is there any opposition to this motion? Actually, I'm going to call the vote. So John, go ahead. That's yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And I'll just say no. I just don't think it's necessary. But that's fine, you pass. All right. So back to the main motion. So we have the main motion, which is Mr. Strike's motion to adopt the plan with staff conditions, with the one condition that's now been amended to not recommend the vacation of the DeBar right-of-way. Doesn't alter the plan in any way, as I understand it, but to leave the right-of-way as is. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Is there any opposition to adopting the main motion?
We're going to call it.
You want to call it? Let's call it. All right. Starting down this way. Mr. Spohays.
Chair, I have a question, is, is maybe it's on the scope of it?
Say again?
I have a question, maybe it's on the scope of it. It's a PLI land of parking. In the future, could the state or the state keep eminent domain to take back the right-of-way to its continued use?
So what Mr. Spohays is recommending is that the city get the state to vacate the right-of-way and then force the state to come back and pay the city later when they need it. That's brilliant. Yeah, you could always, the city could always use eminent domain. But that said, the main motion is on, is on the table with the recommendation to not recommend vacation in the right-of-way. So what's your, what's your vote on the main motion?
I support the main motion.
Very good. Mitzi?
Aye.
Andre?
Aye.
Tony? Brendan?
I support the main motion.
Greg?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. So there's unanimous approval. Any additional findings?
I would just like to say that this master plan is supported, in fact, tonight by public testimony. It's supported by community councils and recommended by the staff throughout the packet as outlined on page nine.
And I would also just like to commend Parks and Rec, the community coming together. And I'd also like to say, so often right now, we're talking about the negative parts in our community, and I think it's very good to sort of celebrate the positive, that no matter what, we still live in this community, let's make it a better place. So bravo to you guys. Next up? Well, you're good. So if you want to stick around, you... You guys ready to roll right into the next one? Okay, we're just going to call a quick, a couple-minute break, and then come back for the final case. Thank you. Can I get you guys to kind of, we're going to try, we've got one more case, and we want to wrap up. See you later. I'm going to make you work for a little while longer. What I, what I wanted to say is, in addition to that one case, John has a couple comments related to work sessions that he wants to make after, after our case. And then John Spring has an item he'd like to bring up under Commissioner Comment. So if I can, you know, just get you to, you know, hold off on that, you know, adjourning button until we do that, so...
You mean this one?
Painful as it is, yeah. He doesn't have one, so I just don't get to, like, I just ignore you the time. So case twenty sixteen zero zero three nine, the proposed amendment to community council boundaries to merge Mid-Hillside and Hillside East Community Councils into one. And by the looks of the audience, maybe we should have, like, added a few more community councils. John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. The purpose of the, very brief presentation, in fact, was to bring forward a recommendation to combine two community councils, those mid, mid-page nine, the bookcases. You'll see from the packet that the reservation was adopted by both the councils to have that to much of the new entity, presumably the Hillside Community Council. The reason for the merger is explaining the staff report briefly, both, both of those two councils have been essentially, for lack of better word, strong and non, non-active, never active in the past years or so. So it was brought to our attention from the, this congressman's office a little over a year ago, that it was interesting, the department, to, to merge, to run. We then spoke with the state clerk and the army congressman about that. The decision was made to forward, to record, forward that to you for your review and comment. And subsequent to the recommendation to approve, and now being forwarded to the Assembly to amend the community council boundaries. And so with that, quite a thing, there were copies, we distributed of this proposal to all the community councils. We received one response back from the Northeast Community Council, excuse me, Airport Heights and Bay Harbor. We did also speak with Federation of Community Councils, and they will only do on record to the general supported over the report. So we got our standard...
Right. Any questions? No questions. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing. Are you going to testify?
No.
No? Are you sure? Okay, seeing no one here to testify, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the body?
I move to approve case number two thousand sixteen dash zero three nine as proposed.
Second. And just to clarify, this is a recommendation of the Assembly? Is the Assembly? Okay, very good. So moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Cange. Any discussion? Any opposition? Seeing none, this recommendation is approved.
For the findings, for the Assembly, I'd just like to point out that it was supported by both community councils in joint resolution dated January twenty-eighth, and it's attached in our packet, supported by recommendation of the staff as outlined on page three of our staff packet.
Okay, very good. At some point, I'm going to come back to these committees, and we have to rework these committees. It's a list that needs cleaned up. So could we, could we just maybe have it at our next director's meeting? Or maybe I just, we need to vet it myself. Can we do it quickly? Is, are there any of these, I'm on a Title Twenty-One committee along with Tony Cange. Is there a design criteria manual committee that this, this body attends? I don't believe so. Andre, you're involved at times, but it's not formal planning commission participation, I would imagine. Okay? So I'm just going to scratch it for now. If we see a need, we can always add a committee back, okay? Long-range, this is supposed to be RFP, Policies and Procedures Committee? I don't know that that is active. No? No? No longer active? Permitting Process Streamlining Committee? Doesn't exist. Well-meaning, but doesn't exist. Gone. AMATS Committee? Is that what that's called, John? It's the, it's the AMATS? What is that?
Well, this would be a new committee, would be the Citizen Advisory Committee, the AMATS.
Citizen Advisory Committee?
But they changed it?
To AMATS, yep. And, and you do, you are on that committee, correct?
Right. So we could, yes, just change the name, and I think that I could serve as, you know, the old AMATS committee, the, as well as the CS.
The Airport Master Plan Committee? I'm not, I don't know how I even got on there. Someone else was attending. You were attending, Brandon?
Well, units spoke previously, taking care of that, have interest in the topic, would be like to have representation from planning committees on that.
Is there an ongoing, Hal or John, do you know if there's an ongoing, any kind of master plan update happening? And by airport, I mean, that could be the big airport, Merrill Field, I don't know what that...
They've been, they've been meeting with, like, Lake Hood, there's a lot of stuff going on with Lake Hood, and there's been several planning meetings, I've been attending some of them.
We all, so, and part of the tour on Wednesday last week, they have some, some changes that they want to talk about. So I think you'll see some more work that needs to be done there. I bet the whole, you know, the, they're pushing for the change, and going back, they are good. It's also a huge player, as we all know, and they expect more planning there.
So, well, I, I think we need to call it the Ted Stee, I mean, it's the whole big air, airport, right? Is what it is? Lake Hood and the main airfield. So it's the TSAIA or whatever, is that what it is? TSAIA, Master Plan Committee. Mr. Spohays, you are hereby on that committee, and once there is something to be done, you're, you're on the ready. How's that?
Sounds adequate.
UMed District Plan has been approved, so I imagine that does not, that does not exist anymore, right, Mr. Walker? Wetlands?
Meets once a year, that I've seen, usually in the spring, and I'm waiting probably for a notification. Usually the Army Corps of Engineers comes out with a notification, and we met down at the mayor's office conference room, typically for this. But again, it's, I've not received any notices, but it's been in the past once a year.
So let's keep it on. Interaction with Assembly, we're just going to take that off. Not that we're going to interact, but I don't think that's, that's a committee, per se. Budget Finance Work Committee. Now, is this our own CIP process? School District?
District piece, and, well, I think this is a residual committee from the last administration. A member of the CFO or somebody came by and said, oh, we, yes, we need to, we would like somebody to serve on our budget committee, and that offer is no longer on the table.
Okay.
Really? I, I mean, I haven't seen any follow-up from the new administration in twenty, twenty years. Who's this?
That was regenerated, it was all...
Let's, let's cross that one off. Here's what I am going to do. I'm going to put one on there, I'm not going to assign anybody today, but I'd like to put the CIP committee on there. Because I think it's a big missing link that we have between these plan approvals and the actual programming and the money. We need better coordination. Just, let's give that some thought on what that would look like, Hal?
Yes.
Okay?
How about I?
So just CIP. Good? Yes, Mitzi?
I would still like to see a little housing anchorage.
Okay.
What housing anchorage?
So housing anchorage doesn't necessarily exist, there is the live-work-play housing area of focus that does exist.
I guess that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
So what's the name of the...
So, so it would be, live-work-play housing area of focus. It's really what it is.
Well, actually, to kind of remind you, Mr. Strike, was there a meeting at the mayor's conference, the industrial lands survey update? Is that the technical term of it?
I'll wait and maybe have John touch on it as it relates to land use plan map. And now, the only other one, I don't think we have, we're all in this land use plan map thing at this point. We are not in, we are not committed. So he'll, he'll touch on what other sections. Is that good for everybody else, though? Anything else we're missing? We at least get that list cleaned up a little bit?
Well, the only, the only comment I would put out there is another topic to be on the alert on, because we've never seen the DOT come up as much in the last period of time. But is there any linkage that we should be having with the DOT? Or do we just sit back and wait till we continue, we get hit with items?
Well, I mean, AMATS has, has a relationship to some degree. Yes?
It's his fault.
But they don't deal with driving.
Well, yeah. I can put you on that committee, I don't know what that does.
But I'm, it, it's ironic that ever since we came down on them so hard on the Eagle River Bridge, now they're negative, negative, negative on everything.
I think the other issue, perhaps more germane, is this notion that they evidently no longer have signed the Our Context Sensitive Solutions Process, so they're not a party to the process, which basically means they can, they're going to, is that true, John? I mean, they've let that lapse, and they've not re-signed it. But we can't force them, we can make a recommendation if they sign it. So, thank you for obliging me on that list. You think you got it, Lori? We'll look at the next one. John, and then, then John. So John, land use plan map, or just otherwise, some work sessions?
So, since the industrial land use assessment, there is a meeting focused through the, focused group, the residential, focused residential land use assessment group, and then also the commercial and industrial. So limitations is going out now, this is going to be held first and second, it may be mailed. So we should be getting that, and that ties in, and that work is also a form of the land use plan map work.
Who's getting, who's invited to that? Who's being invited to that?
Well, everyone that was involved previously, so, that attended those meetings.
Residential invite could always get out.
Yeah.
When, I guess I'm just not clear, so when you say, like, commercial, industrial, I mean, we were all attended, be it some of the industrial, you know, you guys. So, but are we going to get, are we all be getting invites for that?
I, I believe so. I'll, I'll talk to Tom and...
Could you confirm and let us know, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. In turn, that leads then to land use plan map, plan map issue with work sessions, and we had a meeting last week with, I think, four commissioners, and I gave a quick update on that. I know there was some discussion with further questions that some of the officials had, but sounded like the, having a follow-up work, work session would be helpful. So Carol suggested that I ask you when that would be convenient for you, if it's a meet. And it sounded like maybe to five-thirty time frame before the Monday meetings, might be an appropriate time to do that for the session, but I think that would be...
So are you, yeah, I mean, I think it's generally, I've seen better attendance at that, at those meetings, if you can get it done in an hour. When is the plan map coming to us? When is the public hearing draft expected to be released? Let's put, rephrase that.
Yeah, this, this month.
So the public hearing draft is coming out soon?
Yeah.
Really? So you're going to, these focus groups should just turn that around really quickly. Okay? And then at that point, what is it, a sixty-day review before it comes to us? So it's...
I think the date has been showing, we've kind of had it in front, it's on the second June, June twenty...
Okay. Well, I was not at the meeting the other day, but it sounded like there was a request for a work session. I would, I would, I would ask, the more specific... I would, I would, I would ask, the more specific we get in terms of a work session, the better off it, it is. I mean, I've had a lot of presentations on the general land use plan map process, I would not be interested in another one of those personally. But, and, and what I, one of the things I spoke to Carol about was, if there are specific questions coming from the commission, they're likely to be coming from the general public as well, and if we identify those questions, and even put it in a frequently asked question, an FAQ kind of thing, you know, that, to me, is where we start to have an understanding of how this thing gets used, how it gets interpreted, what happens if I have a certain zoning that's different from the plan map? Can I move forward? It's those types of nitty gritty things that I think, I hear people when they ask questions. But I don't know, if other people have other items that they, they really want fleshed out, we should ask staff, or-
The nitty gritty items that, when I've heard, and that I would be interested in knowing is, so, say you got R2, R2M, R3, R4 land, and then you have the different residential designations, with the brown, the light brown, whatever they are, how-
How do you distinguish between R2, R3, R4?
How do those, going forward, how do those jive? Like, how do they mix? How does R3 under light brown, what do we call that?
Yeah.
That would be something I'd be interested in. I think everything would be.
I think the whole idea, like, we just saw it here, that the public process that's done on the front end makes a better plan.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think to do that, they use, the, what's the relationship between the zoning map and the general?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your question, Parker. We had, we had put on a, a meeting webpage, an FAQ, that tries to address those kind of questions, because we have some, we're dealing with that, and, but, we would welcome more questions that we could put in, in that, in format, or whatever is appropriate, to help, you know, address your questions as well as kind of-
I think it's distributed more broadly, I mean, that's great, you know, the website, it's distributed in one of my, to some councilors, other stakeholders who do, you know, from the-
So, so, let me ask you this, if, if it really is coming to June, would there be a desire to have a meeting in May? Or would you rather just have a work session the night of the public hearing? John?
Well, I, I think it's important to have some discussion and work sessions before the public hearing draft is out. This is the public review draft that's out now. In, in, in urban plans, when there's two phases like this, we usually get involved in the public review draft, and make suggestions and things that we think should be addressed before it's put into the final version.
Well, but you've had, I mean, there've been opportunities.
I, I haven't-
I know we've had at least one, two, we've had some work sessions.
Yeah, but now the plan map's out.
Yeah.
I haven't seen a plan map. There's a lot of, I mean, before now, I mean, I haven't really viewed it with staff. That's the most important part of it. There's redevelopment areas that they're, they're fine, as far as, uh, the most important priorities for public in, uh, infrastructure improvements, we haven't seen any of that. I think we've got some experience here that we could probably share to the staff that would help make a better, uh, public, uh, hearing.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we're gonna make that, given what I just heard, but, but it sounds like if we request a, a work session in May, that'll at least be ahead of our June hearing.
I think so, because then you at least get our questions and concerns on the table, and we can focus on public testimony, which we know that will be a significant amount at that night. So if we can save an hour, talk amongst ourselves, I, I think it's more beneficial than-
Would you be voting that night on anything?
I doubt it.
It'd just be a information, right? So, I think we could probably either follow what Tony said, do it for it.
So look at, John, if you would, go back and look at what we have on our schedule in May. And, and yeah, those, the prior to the meetings worked for me, and I, I have, I'm getting harder and harder to do some stuff during the day, so that would be, that would be preferable.
So, second, the second work session I heard is, uh, is going to be as well, as you requested for, and that's from, uh, Anker Street Land Trust, on behalf of the Mountain View, Charter of Neighborhood Plan. And, uh, we held, uh, at least one work session with, those folks, three and two, right now, and probably just one, uh, previously, and they would like to come back again and talk to you about their thing. And, uh, so we're, Mr.- What's changed since the last time they reviewed it, that they think we should have more? Um, I'm not sure that there's been a whole lot of changes, it's more just, uh, the one issue that I know that's still outstanding, that we have a difference with them, and that's that mixed use order on the east end designation, and there's an issue there with J bear, and then, uh, crack protections on it. And they're, they, the land trust wants to continue with what they proposed initially, which is what the public saw. Notwithstanding Snacks, conversations with them about that, notwithstanding J bear's conversation, so I think that's probably one of the major issues.
So here, here's what I was gonna suggest with them, and part of it is, they just, if you're a petitioner, and you're, you're basically putting a plan together, they don't know where we're gonna go with things, and they just want the ability to have a less formal opportunity to walk us through, and I think that's totally legitimate. I'd be okay with that work session the evening that we take it up, on that one. Everybody okay with that? So, so let's plan on that one, that whatever the date they're coming, work session for the Mountain View plan, and then the, the, the plan map, the land use plan map, work it in ahead.
And one very nice thing, and that is, um, a note, that several notices have gone out about the Smart Growth Workshop, it's May tenth, I believe, um, and so far, we've only received one confirmation, uh, from a commissioner to attend that, who would, who would like to encourage all that is possible to attend that.
And I'll just say this, this, I know this will shock people, but sometimes a reminder, my inbox is ugly. So I don't, I don't mind, I don't mind getting a reminder, like, hey, we didn't hear from anybody. I'm telling you, it's ugly.
I think so.
Well, then we're at least well represented. So you good, you good with that? Yeah? Okay. Before we go, John Spring has something that you'd like to bring up. John and I both talked about it.
This involves the, um, fast packing, the Title 21 amendments, that, I think, I only know about it because I got about it in the legislature, and we talked about it a little bit, I think, among ourselves. There were three different ordinance changes, I think, proposed by the Assembly. I don't, um, they elected, on their own, I believe, you know, their authority, I think, to fast pack all three of them. I don't know if I would disagree with that, all of them, and maybe one of them might have some concerns, because I think we review the same issue as, as the commission, and made a recommendation. And I think when we review something and they change it, I think we should review it again, following it. But, that'd be my criteria. The other two seem really, really inconsequential, and I have no problem with it. But in general, fast packing, I think, you open the door, and I don't know how you close it. It's, what's the criteria for fast packing? How do you decide what is inconsequential and useful for the development community, and doesn't need a lot of public input, and just tweaking, and what isn't? I don't see any fine line there that I can use to determine that. The other point is that, the Title 21 specifically says that, then, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall, uh, make recommendations on, on Title 21 amendments. It doesn't say that we shall make the oaths that the Assembly thinks we should make. There's no authority to do the fast pack, that I can see, unless I'm mistaken, I don't know where that came from. There hasn't been a Title 21 change to make, that's true. I think we have the authority and the responsibility to make those determinations about fast pack. It's our authority, we are, should be the ones that give it up, when we think it's important. We should be getting all the amendments to, sent to us, to review for fast pack. And it wouldn't take, I don't think that'll take an important amount of time. They do, they write an amendment, they put it in our packet, that night, we, we put it on our agenda, we say, yes, 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 we fast pack all of that, and we give them authority to fast. Otherwise, if we don't do that, take that step, then we're basically saying, well, our authority, we don't care about whether or not we're responsible for that, we'll give that authority to the Assembly. And I don't want to be that type of commission, that says, well, we're sorry, we don't, are interested in performing our duties, and, and sticking to the requirements of Title 21. I think we need to put up some type of, um, recommendation to the Assembly.
Okay, good, and, and, go ahead, Andre.
So, one of the, I don't know which ones you're talking about of three, but one of the ones was, came out of a home builder association meeting, and, uh, so I kind of was somewhat involved with it. And what I heard was, from the chair of the Assembly, we don't answer to P&amp;Z, P&amp;Z answers that, we're gonna do what we want to do. So I, I guess, how would you respond to that?
Yeah.
Do you want to get a point?
Hal?
How?
Can you go on the mic, Hal? Since we're on the record.
The discussion between-
Can you go on the mic?
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to get it. Um, I think another piece of this is, thinking about your, uh, P&amp;Z meetings that you want to have, because the discussion between the chair, himself, Chris Judy, goes, hey, if we did it within their schedule, can we, can we do that? Are you willing to do that? And the discussion was, maybe we should pay them to come to more meetings, uh, as a planning, serious discussion, because they feel that there's a lot of work out there that we need to be in the year ahead, and so, it's like kind of an act of, of having more P&amp;Z meetings to grapple with the issues that they see coming up. So, and I said, well, maybe we should be sending them to national conferences in exchange or something. No, they're trying to give you guys as much exposure to the issues, but no, we, we were having a serious discussion about that this, on Friday, and talking about the role of planning and zoning group, and serious, hard work ahead of us, on a number of issues. And, uh, so just, I'm trying to, out there that it should be over there.
I'm, I mean, while we're having the discussion, we just took off the DCM committee, but what I was told is that the DCM was somewhere in the new Title 21, was basically kind of made that it needed to go through the same public process as the other documents that kind of dictate how we build buildings. And so, that would be a whole nother host of meetings if that ever grew teeth and did happen. I mean, so we, we'd be talking about a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I, I don't think my suggestion's going to require more meetings, I just think we're gonna have to read the ordinance changes.
Yeah, no, let me try. I, I, and I, you should know, I, I got a call from Tony Jones, uh, when that article came out. I don't know if you many even know Tony. But Ton, Tony, uh, she was always the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission when I was on staff, and I think she had been, she told me she served under every mayor except Ethan Berkowitz on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And she was calling me from Florida to say, you do realize that the Planning and Zoning Commission has a lot of authority and a lot of responsibility, and I hope you're not abdigating your authority as a recommendation to the, to the Assembly. And I think that's kind of embodies what your point was, John. I, what I would say is, if we can come up with a recommendation, if we can float a recommendation, I believe that with the new code, there needs to be, uh, when, when I went through multifamily design stuff, and it took eight months to get something through, that wasn't, that wasn't an expedient or responsible response to issues in the community. On the other hand, I don't think the city does itself any favors by the appearance of completely skipping any kind of process. In the end, it bites them, and it doesn't save any time. Right? So somewhere in the middle there, is something that can be worked out. So I don't know if you want, if you wanna, you know, work on starting to put a couple of thoughts together, that we could eventually bring forth a, a resolution that says, here's what, you know, what, what we recommend to either the, the staff, and/or communicate to the Assembly. I mean, that would be, that would be our, really only our recourse, is to provide a resolution with, with the, with the opinion of the body.
And I, I, I'm prepared to write a resolution for that, but I wanted to give us some feeling about what the commission thought about how we should approach it, and, or whether there's support for it at all. And I think my original idea, as I stated, was that the resolution would basically, um, we'd ask the Assembly and the administration to send all ordinances to the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine, uh, whether or not they need to fast track.
It's even, it's even-
Basically, it's simple.
Yeah, but it's even broader than that, John, because right now, if you have a problem with the code, you really don't know where to go. You don't know if you go to your Assembly member, you don't know if you call Hal, you don't know if you just write your own ordinance and try to introduce it. I mean, there's, we, overall, as the community, it needs to be sort of better, better, you know, a better, a process needs to be defined, one way or the other. And I think that's my biggest issue, is the process is unknown. Now people feel like, if I have a process, I go to Amy.
Well, we copied the live, work, play grid.
Yeah, well, no, I'm saying, because it wasn't defined. Yeah. So I created part of this mess, so, and, but, but our, our ordinance came to this body, though, Andre, go on.
Well, yeah, we made recommendations that I was okay with, and then that ordinance got dropped, and a new one was created.
It's Andre's fault.
That left the other, the stuff we changed out.
I, I suggest that, John, you start something, you, you float some words on, on paper, and, and circulate, and I think you can get some ideas, sort of crowdsource it that way a little bit.
I'm not completely opposed to, like, the idea or in favor of stepping on the public process, but, I, just to let you know, like, the one the home builders did, it was a Thursday meeting, where we were just designers blabbing about our problems, that then turned into an ordinance that went to the Assembly on Friday. So I don't know where, maybe what they need to do is notify P&amp;Z, so P&amp;Z can show up at the Assembly meeting and testify.
And, and any other, I'm not going to Assembly meeting, I can tell you that much.
There's something you meant, not that it's to get rid of it.
Yeah. That's right.
To, to address your other part of the problem, maybe some type of committee is needed, that's trying to get it focused, so that it would be the focus point for people who, developers and public that think it needs to be changed. Somebody who can sort through this stuff and say, this, this is so important, maybe to fast track this, and, let's go with it.
Well, yeah. No, I thought there ought to, there ought to be some kind of harbiter. I don't know who that is, you know? Someone that is, is perceived to be objective, and I think that's the problem.
Would have the authority by the, the administration would then be able to take it and run with it then.
And, and write an actual ordinance.
If the committee said, we gotta go and do it, and wouldn't be up to developers to go and write the ordinance themselves, although they probably do.
I mean, I think overarching, too, I like John's point, I think Andre's a good point also, that, but I think, you know, the way I look at it is that if an Assembly member, maybe I'll shoot myself in the foot here, if an Assembly member, if I were an Assembly member, and I'm gonna introduce an ordinance, guess what, it's for political reason. Right? So, the process, I think, needs to be, since it's our charter to work with the Assembly and review that, and ask the questions of staff, that's where it should all start, I think, and, but, you know, again, that's probably what they need to do, is introduce any old ordinance, but-
Greg, and then, and then I'll ask for final thoughts, and then we'll get it.
And there was a caveat, and the perceptions become reality. The NZ got reported to the Assembly, not the other way around, in the process, and then one with Andre's caveat. So perceptions becoming reality. If that's not reality, meaning, and in the phone call you got regarding control and the authority of the P&amp;Z commission, then maybe we need to be told exactly what is the authority and the dictate of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that there is no second guessing between the Assembly, ourselves, and the staff.
So, so you're asking that maybe attorney get involved?
Well, yeah, I mean, you'll recall, like, the, the marijuana ordinance, they forgot to put a fee in the structure of the ordinance, right? So it went straight to the Assembly. Now, I had no problem with that, because they literally just forgot to put the fee in the ordinance.
But, we saw it. We saw it.
You saw it, but it wasn't, it wasn't up for our decision. We just saw it. It was fast, it wasn't, we weren't acting on it.
Also, staff was courteous enough to at least, they tried to get ahold of Tyler, called me, I spoke to Tyler, and I was like, you know, so we kind of had some, like, yeah, okay, no, we forgot.
At least we had the opportunity to say, oh, wait, that's a decision-
At least we had the opportunity to say, oh, wait, that decision isn't very important.
Yeah, I forget who it was, but it was Francis or-
My view, that is checking the box and keeping everything in sync and compact and moving forward.
Yeah.
You even put that on the record too, that you agreed with that.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So, I, I, no, I think it's, I think it's, it's an important issue, I mean, it's a really important issue, because I think to Tony's point, it, it does, there is, there is, there is a lot of distrust, I mean, you know, I, whether it's home builders or live, work, play, or whatever, there's a lot of distrust, so I think we've got to be really careful on the process that's created, or it just, again, it just backfires, you end up working on it.
Because the next one will probably be like a Walmart or something, I mean, it'll be something that comes up where the product, everyone's like, we need this, this doesn't make any sense, it needs to change, it needs to change, and not wait six months to change.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll happen, I guarantee it, and it's Hal, like, you might already know about it.
Yeah.
Somebody might bring it, but I, I think that we're not for sure.
I, I'm hearing general support for at least making, trying to flush out our, our opinion and making that known in some way. And I, is that, is that, yes? And John, you're good with starting, uh, uh, putting pen to paper? Great. All right, Brandon, you're up. Motion to adjourn.
Before I adjourn, I nominate John as the arbiter, and then I most, I make the motion.
I'd like John and Andre to be that arbiter, that'd be, with no tiebreaker, it's just like a grudge match.
Greg's second.
Greg's second.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.